It's real sensitive, even in the hallway, so if you watch the chatter during the meeting, so the mic won't pick it up. It's the same as like it is in the E O's, our E O Center. Real, real sensitive, so we need to, we've worked overtime, overtime on talks. I don't see it on the, on the agenda, but we start all out meeting with a prayer and a pledge of due act flag. So at this time, before we introduce all the participants this morning, we're going to stand, we're going to have a prayer, and then we're going to practice your act flag.
You have an Father, once again, dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings, dear Father. But most of all, we thank you for that Son, Jesus Christ. Father, be with us this morning as we meet with our county at Swanee in Columbia County to talk about the utility needs for our county. Father, we know that we don't have all the answers, but we look for your guidance. We look for the guidance of these commissioners from Swanee County and from Columbia County, for the betterment of the people in each county, for the future of the people in each county, for our county as a whole, dear Father. Now, Father, be with us as we have this meeting this morning, in our Son, Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to your Father, in all his great glory, in all his great power, in his hands, one nation under God, indivisible, in the great heath of God.
At this time, you come out and swear, hold your hand up. Swear, we're going to start with our attorney, Mr. Williams, now let everybody around the table to introduce themselves so the court can get your names.
Yes, sir. I'm Mr. Eric Grady Williams. I am from Clay County, but I'm the attorney for the North Florida Water Utilities Authority, and I'm proud to be here today.
Thank you.
Joe Foreman, Columbia County Attorney.
Tim Murphy, Columbia County Commissioner.
Don Viall, Swanee County Commissioner, District One.
Robbie Holland, Worth County Commissioner.
Frank Watt, County Commissioner.
Ryan Weaving, Columbia County Commissioner.
Travis Land, Swanee County Commissioner.
Rocky Fuller, Columbia County Commissioner.
Leo Mobley, Swanee County Commissioner.
Edward Bell, Columbia County Commissioner.
Bruce Perkins, Columbia County Commissioner.
David Kraus, County Manager, Columbia County.
Shannon Roberts, Swanee County Administration.
Chris Scott, Swanee County Administrator, Administrator.
We have one little wall over there.
Adam Morrison, Swanee County Attorney.
Jimmy Norr, Seeking Mal development for Swanee County.
Spanish County Director, Columbia County.
Greg Bailey, North Florida Professional Services.
I'm Steve Brown, the Executive Director of Utilities for the City of Lake City.
County Planner.
Louis Good, County Planner.
Dale Williams.
Dale, North Florida Professional Services.
And Temporary Director of Utility.
Right there, North Florida Water Utility Authority.
Did I miss anyone?
Kirby.
Kirby, where is he?
He thought he was going to get mine.
He ain't getting no roses, baby.
All right, we'll follow the agenda at credit, review of the Swanee County Utility Projects.
And.
Morning, gentlemen. I'm going to run through a brief summary of the Swanee County Utility Projects. I've got a number of slides. I'm going to move back and forth to show you some information in detail, but hopefully we can just dialogue. And if you have any questions, just hit me during the process and I can pause to answer. But instead of going through every single slide, which will be no fun for everybody, I'm going to move around and hit the highlights. And if you've got questions or we need to park in some place and dialogue, just let me know. All right. So in Swanee County, I'm going to show you basically three general areas where we have the bulk of our utility projects. In the western edge of the county, at our industrial park, we've got projects going on there. In the north central part of the county, around Interstate 10, and that where U S 129 intersects, we've got projects there. And then on the eastern side of the county, out at I 75, exit 439, where County Road 136 cuts across the interstate, and right at the edge of Columbia and Swanee County, we've got projects going on there, too. There's several things going on in each area. I'm not going to go through every single one of them, but I'm just going to kind of hit the highlights and give you an idea of what's there. Some of these projects are stacked up well out into 2045 into the future. Others are imminent or they're in flight now. And so when we, what I'm going to do is I'm going to move from the west to the east. So I'll start out at the catalyst site, and then we'll move east toward Columbia County. One of the things I think is important to show in relation to the North Florida Regional Utilities is these things, these projects that I'm sure not only that Swanee's doing, but Columbia is doing, they have a, they grow. They're not a small thing at one point in one time. What I'm trying to show you here is if you took Swanee County, tilted it a little bit, and drew a six-square-mile block around where we're doing our projects, what you'll see is these utility projects have the capacity to reach for miles in each direction. At the Swanee site, it, it's really bordering the river right where Madison County is. In the north central area, if you follow that all the way up 129, you're in the edge of Hamilton County. And then to the east over where exit 439 on the interstate, that site and its capacity and its service area actually stretches into what is part of Columbia County. So when you see this, part of the whole thing with the utility is just understanding where things are, how they interconnect and relate. So I just, this is, I can come back to this later, but I just wanted you to think in your mind, when you see these things, they're not just at a couple of acres where they sit today. They grow and they move and they'll change over time. Out at our industrial park, we've already got water service out there. We don't have sewer service. We have ground storage. We've recently changed our company where we were using ESI to manage services out there, but we changed to J E L H two O. We did that for all our utilities. We've got one customer out there, a new customer pending. They're building their site right now. When they get up and running, we'll have services for them. What I want to talk about is where we're going in the future, and this is where the bulk of these projects are. Generally speaking, we've got about 12 projects outlined just for water in the catalyst parks. There are three phases of those projects that are in flight right now, or they've, they've already started. We're extending about 17,000 feet of piping to Wave Armor that they're the one that's, they're building out at, out at the site. So that project will deliver potable water and fire service to them. If, and if you go back in the other direction, Wave Armor would be on the eastern side of the service area. On the western side of the service area, we're doing the engines, starting to do the engineering and planning to extend water and fire service to the western side of the, of the site. We've been planning to begin work on a water tower. We're trying to put up a million gallons of elevated storage there. We're working with F D O P to get a small piece of property where we can put that relatively close to that industrial park area. We need some more funding there. We've got a line on that, but we can't really start on that funding piece till the county's got either leased or some type of control over the land. But when we can get that piece done, which I think we get maybe by the beginning of next year, we'll start in the design phase on that. After that, you see in this table, there's several other projects. There's about all of these projects on that table. That's about $25 million of work, but that's, that's today. In the future, it'll, it'll be more than that. So we're going to have to work to go get that funding. So we're, for what we're doing today, we'll, we're halfway into what we need to work on by 2030. Then we'll, we'll continue to work on those and go get funding as, as we need to. That's a picture of what we're trying to do. That's our service area, and the different lines are potable water and fire main or fire service. And we're doing it in phases. There's so much work that needs to be done out there. We're trying to do the work to align it with the growth and the business development projects that are happening out there. Everything we do in these areas is keyed on the economic development pieces. So the first three or four pieces, we've got customers that are interested and/or imminent, and we're trying to make sure that they have the service they need. But we're also trying to plan for the future so we can attract more. Any questions on the catalyst site and the water out there? I know this is, this is riveting. Everyone is excited to talk about water pipes.
Let me ask something. Where's the Falmouth Little Spring? I'm trying to get my mind around where that's at. Where's the Little Falmouth Spring?
You see where the U S 90 sign is there?
Yeah.
It's, I don't know if it's in this map. If it's not, it's west of that. All right. So let's talk about wastewater. Currently, we don't have any wastewater services out in our catalyst area. That's what we're trying to do. We've got, we've signed an engineering agreement to start the design for a 200,000 gallon per day plant and piping and lift stations to go with that, the collection system. And we're also, we'll take a look at whether we use infiltration basins or sprayfield based on the topography of what's out there and what's allowed. We have two customers out there that we could put on the, the system, and we have one to four customers. I love you too, Mr. Ford. Yeah.
Get up, Rock.
So we, we have some new customers that, like Wave, Wave Armor is one of them. There'll be some others that come on. We've been fortunate enough to get all the funding we need for these, these initial set of three or four projects out here. This is, this 11.2 million, it's building a plant, putting in the collection system and the sprayfield. That's like three projects in one all combined. And we've been fortunate enough to, to do that. We're probably 15 months to get through the design and get to the selection phase, and then at least another 18 months for construction. So we're a little more than two, two and a half years out on actually turning up this service. This is this kind of a similar table here. Yes, sir.
So how far are y'all right now, when if you was given an estimated time for sewer at your catalyst site or wastewater? How far out are you on that, you think, if you was?
2027 is I think when it's, it'll come online sometime in that timeframe.
Couple of years?
Yes, sir.
About three years.
It's, it's quite an endeavor. We're working with North Florida Professional Services. They're doing the design engineer piece. It's a big plant. It's what, five or six miles of piping initially, and the lift stations plus the sprayfield. So that design effort, it's a 12-month design effort on that. And then once we can get through that, to get ready for bid selection, another couple of months, we're looking at almost 13 to 15 months before we actually are getting into the dirt.
Do you have any funding in place now?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we've got the design and the construction funded.
Good deal.
What's that number?
11.2 million. Just like I showed you on the water projects, there's a list. We worked with North Florida. They put together for, for the county, a master plan of utilities out in that area. So here again is a list of several projects that will happen out of that site. If this site grows and we get more and more service, one of the first things we'll need to do is increase the capacity with a bigger plant and sprayfield, and the rest is just piping and lift stations to extend the service all throughout the service area. This has got a bigger price tag. This is what, 42 million? I want to say the 43 million that we're going to have to go get. We've, we've got 11 now, so we're going to have to do some work to get more funding as we go out into the next decade and beyond on this, this particular service. Any questions?
What's your total accounting cost? Consulting.
Um, wow, that's a great question. I don't know off the top of my head. I want to say it's a million. No, it's not. Greg, 800,000, 818,000? Okay. Yeah, I got a little crazy with that. Sorry, sir. We're, if I'm not mistaken, right now, Greg, keep me to this, we're at 1.5% utilization. We're way under.
Yeah, we're way under.
For the moment, that we're hoping to change that. That's a good question. I wasn't quite ready for that when you threw it on that. And I'm not even the utility guy. All right. So here's a picture of what that's going to look like. The, the green box kind of in the center that's got the horizontal or the verticals, the slanted lines, that's the site for the proposed plant. And then the rest is systematically installing the piping throughout the service area, you know, as customers come in. All right. So now we're going to shift from the west. So we were way over here. We were way over here in the west, talking about all the stuff out in the industrial park. Now we're going to swing back to the central part, central northern part of the county. We're going to talk about two things. We're going to talk about utility work that's happening at 68 Terrace, which is right around Walmart, Lowe's, that area. And then we're going to talk about some future work that we're going to do to the north of I 10. So 68 Terrace is to the south. The northern part is where the Swanee County Regional Shelter will go. We'll, we'll talk about both of those briefly. Um, this work, what I think is important about this work right here at 68 Terrace, this is going to be a collaborative effort between the county and the city of Live Oak to extend services out to support some economic development projects that are going on here. It's essentially adding a lift station, reconstruction of a road, the intersection geometry and signaling needs to change, and some additional sewer piping that's happening for this project. But what it's going to do is it's going to set the stage for increased capacity in this entire area. And that'll be of, of great interest and benefit for the, for the city of Live Oak. Now, if you see in this particular picture, we're just about not even a mile south of Interstate 10. If we go forward just to the northern side of Interstate 10, the county has purchased approximately 300 acres of property for a regional shelter. This is in its infant stages. We've purchased the property. We're, we've got to start the process to do the design work for the shelter and understand what our needs are. We're anticipating that this is going to be, it's going to require some extensive investment for road, water, sewer, and power, and also some extensive collaboration with D O P, emergency management, power companies, city of Live Oak. I don't know who else will be involved in that, but this will be a, this is a significant undertaking. Here again, we haven't even done anything except just purchase the property. So we're 24 to 36 months away from being able to turn up a shelter and occupy it. And we don't even know what that actually looks like yet and what it'll require, but we started the process to get this project going. All right. Any questions? That's the central part of the area. And then now let's move out to the west, excuse me, to the east, towards Columbia County. So several months ago, I, I've kind of presented some of this same information. We are, we've got a water plant out on County Road 137. We've been able to, we've got a couple of customers out there around intersection, I mean, excuse me, exit 439. To the south, we extended water lines way to the south of where this location is, all the way to I 10, and then just a little, little bit farther south than that. True Leaf is under construction out there. They are a medical marijuana processing, growing facility. They're able to, to take not only water but sewer as well down there. Eventually, we're thinking, we've had some preliminary discussion with D O T about providing water services for the rest areas on I 10. We'll have to see how that unfolds. True Leaf is doing, they've got some massive buildings, that, that, at least one of them that they've got done out there. And hopefully, maybe early next year, they will have completed their construction of their facilities and be ready to to start service, and they'll be hooking into our utilities by then. That's what we're estimating, you know. As construction work goes, you kind of estimate, and then you deal with the weather and conditions, you know, that you can. So maybe by the first quarter, they, they might be connected to our system. I don't know. We'll, we'll see how that opens, opens up. Our water treatment plant, excuse me, the wastewater plant. So just go on the east side of the interstate at 439. The plant's over there near the farmer's market. We got a 50,000 gallon per day plant. The, the pipes for that were extended down County Road 137 along with the water. So both water and sewer come from 137 all the way south to exit 292 on I 10 and just below that. You know, we wanted to bring both of those all the way to that intersection. There's not a lot of development there, but the hope would be now that you've got those utilities there, it would become attractive for the future. The same with the wastewater plant. What's, what's great about the wastewater plant is we've, it will be able to service True Leaf and, you know, other customers. But we worked with an engineering firm, Locklear, to put together a D E P grant. We're trying to get another $4.3 million for this site, this particular wastewater plant, to extend the wastewater lines along the edge of Columbia County and Swanee County. And if we're successful in, in doing that, I know I've worked with David and Columbia County as a, as a joint effort, we can offer some, at least initially, wastewater services for that portion of Columbia County or the folks that want to connect to it. And this is a great example of what the, the boards and the different members of the utility have been talking about. This from the, from the very beginning, the ability to collaborate and to have services that could one day be all settled under one thing and operated under one entity to cover all over, you know, the multi-county area without one county being able to fund it all. So Columbia County will get the benefit of this. Swanee County will too. But this, I think, is a great example of what the regional utility was trying to establish from the very beginning. It's a small one. We'll, we'll see what things open up and, you know, what things grow as we go forward. All right. So I've gone through the three areas and hit the high level of, of each of these projects. I'm going to just come back to this one thing and park right here to see if there are any follow-up questions on any of the projects in any of the areas.
I believe the follow-up question will be at the commissioner's comment, and then we might go back to those slides.
Yes, sir. Well, if it's okay with you, I can just leave it parked right here, or we can take it down, whatever we need to do.
We'll do Columbia County presentation next, and then there would be a time that we might need to come back to Swanee County.
Yes, sir.
Presentation also.
Mr. Williams? Wrong. Yeah. If I might add just a couple of comments to the Swanee County presentation, just informational. There is a water system in Welburn that over the years, there's conversation about the county being involved with that. There's folks that started that project years and years ago that are getting up in age, so ready to hand it off, I think. So this may be something that works out to our advantage later. And I'm sitting here thinking, and I don't know if there's any interest by others, but there are two other systems. There's, Anna Christian Village has a system. Also, the Voice Ranch has a system. But I, I think we might approach those entities after we get more further down the road with the utility, but those are options down the road also. Great. Greg?
Yes, sir. I'm going to talk about Columbia County's utility system. Start out here with a partial map of the county, talk about the areas that we're going to be discussing here. The very bottom here is the Ellisville area. We'll be talking about that. We'll have North Florida Mega Industrial Park. You may hear me refer to that as N F M I P. That's the acronym for that. This area here is State Road 47. And then the north area here is what we consider to be the Bell Road Interchange Area. So starting with Ellisville, the, we have an existing water treatment plant and a wastewater system there. The water treatment plant capacity there is 320,000 gallons a day. The actual cup or well, whatever you want to call it, is 222,700. So we have a little bit more ability to be able to serve with our water, existing water treatment plant than what we have actual permitted capacity. The wastewater treatment plant system we have down there is about 50,000 gallons a day currently. That started out with a 25,000 gallon a day plant. The county recently upgraded that with another 25,000 gallon a day plant. So right now, the capacity of that gets us up to the 50,000. We've recently reached an agreement with Department of Transportation. They have a, they have a rest area here that has a wastewater treatment plant there as well. We've reached an agreement with them to be able to utilize that plant due to some growth that we're having up here at the interchange area. We have a development coming in there that's basically going to use up all of the capacity that we have and then some. So we're, we're going to be short. So for an interim, we've got the access to the D O T plant. The D O T's funded a project for the county to install a new force main lift station to basically be able to move the, the flows from the county site to the D O T site because they have a lot of excess capacity. In the future, we're looking at upgrading that wastewater treatment plant to at least 300,000 gallons a day to meet the demand that we see right now at this interchange area. The water treatment plant, we'd see a future upgrade to about 400,000 gallons to be able to meet that. The facilities right now are right here in this area here. The blue shows you the, the water treatment plant. The green shows you the wastewater plant for that particular site. Recently, the county's constructed a new port, a new water main that goes from Ellisville to Fort White to help with our water there. That's the, the line you see at the bottom. That line is about 10, a little over 10 miles long. That runs from Ellisville to Fort White. It also opens up Columbia County to provide service to those areas as well.
That blue line that you're showing, Renner, that just won't be water, that water and?
That's just water.
The blue line is just water. On this map here, what you see, the blue lines represent future water lines. On this map here, what you see, the blue lines represent future water lines and existing water lines. And the green is the existing sewer and future sewer that we have right now.
Okay, so you're, you're not got in the wash to put sewer in all, where that water is? Or you won't do that?
We will do that, but we don't have it right, not in Fort White.
Yeah, I'm just talking about right.
In Ellisville, yes, we are covering this area here with sewer. Right now, the current plans are to, we've got a new access road here. That's going to be part of the new development down there. We will be putting sewer in there. We will be taking this area here, which is the new development. It will be going to the existing line. We will end up having to reconstruct this line down to the sewer plant here. And then right now, we're working on a USDA funding package to construct a 300,000 gallon a day or larger wastewater treatment system for that whole area. Because we think once the, once this keeps growing here, we're going to see a lot of work, a lot of new development in the south end area as well.
Was that little road up there off of Owl going north? Over there, is that, that, what's the name of that little road?
Remington?
Yeah.
Yes.
Remington. Is it going all the way?
Master plan, the master plan there is to install a new water main to create a loop across to you. Right now, we don't have any loops. Our water pressure are closed between both sides of the interstate and provide us redundancy. So that the overall plan is to construct that, come in behind the loves over there and then tie back in over there at 238 in that area.
That's a future project. Thank you.
So most of this is commercial in this area. We do serve some residential area on the east side of the interstate in this area here. But all of this up around the interchange area is, is commercial usage right now. And we, we expect that to expand and continue. All right, NF-MIP. Currently, the county has a wastewater treatment plant under construction there. That wastewater treatment plant has 500,000 gallon a day capacity on it. Plus it has the ability to handle leachate from the county landfill. The anticipated completion date of that is the spring of '25 coming up. County also has obtained a cup for this project here, NF-MIP, 2,160,000 gallons per day. Currently, under design is a water treatment plant for 200,000 for potable water. There was a balance of that water, 1.8 million gallons for a total of 2 million gallons of raw water capacity. That will be for industrial use, for fire water and the light. So that's what that will be. These are located right here. Here's the prison out on US 90. The water treatment plant will be just north of that. The well field is actually off this map. It's at the county line. So there'll be a transmission line from the well field to the water treatment plant. And then we have the wastewater treatment plant here. And just to the east of the prison here is the spray field for the wastewater treatment plant. This is a preliminary drawing of how the park would lay out, how the lines would run in that park to provide that service from those two, two plants there. Talking about the whoops and the cups here, those are permits from the Water District. Those are getting very difficult to obtain the, the capacity for these. So just let both boards be aware. Expand these in the future, it's going to take quite a bit of effort. And there may be some other work associated with that to be able to get that. All right, I-75 State Route 47 interchange, that's just South Lake City here. This is a collaborative effort between the county and the city of Lake City. The city of Lake City will be serving this area from their utility system, but I want to kind of cover that. What we show here is again, the blue lines represent the water, the green lines represent the wastewater. What you see is a yellow line, that is natural gas. The city have, in addition to water and wastewater that we all think about, they also have natural gas. So they are, they will provide all three of those utilities. We have, we have a, this interchange, we got a development working in this area right here now. We've got developments up here. This is all commercial, light industrial. We have Next Tran in this area, Ring Powers in this area, to name, to name some of those. And then we've got the other commercial interest. We've got a campground in there and some other trucking and ag pros out here as well. So quite a lot of interest in this area here. But this is anticipated to be served by the city of Lake City. And then the last area we have is Bell Road. Bell Road is this corridor that runs parallel to I-10. This is north of Lake City proper. This area contains a lot of industrial zoned areas, a lot of industrial land uses. Recently, we had Warner Trucking is, is here in this area here. But we opened this corridor up. County is working on extending this back to 41 here. Closing this area right here, because it's a pretty sharp angle for trucks to be able to get in. But then give access to both the 41 and the 441 interchange there. We have, Sun Stop is looking to expand their operation here as well as, as other economic opportunities being worked on. Again, this is served by the city of Lake City along with Columbia County working together on that. Bell Road's been improved. We have, again, we have both water, wastewater and gas at this location here. So we have all three of those utilities available to anybody locating in those areas. This is an area we expect to grow as well.
I just want to add, the Florida Power and Light Regional Maintenance Facility is also on this corner.
Louis, where is that at? Where, Louis?
Yeah.
Would you want to talk about the Duda?
We got a, we got a slide up there.
Before we go to the slide, Commissioner Hollings, ask a question. Actually, this is where the Florida Power and Light Development.
That's behind Red Bud, Red Bud right in there?
Adjacent to it.
Yes, sir.
That'd be continuation, Commissioner.
Brad, let Louis talk about the Duda.
Plant's fine.
Just one slide.
You got to switch slides.
All right. I met with the landowners of this area. We had a great meeting. They all were in agreement that they want to participate in the expanding the Duda in this area. And Louis explained to us what that opens up in that area on that north end.
This opens up the, the ability for planning and zoning, to change zoning as, as needed. As everybody here knows, most of Columbia County's agrarian agriculture, this opens it up to residential and commercial. This is the expansion, it's not proposed now, it's finalized. That is the finalized Duda expansion on the north end of the Lake City area Duda. You have the opportunity there for more denser housing and more opportunities for different types of commercial development. But this has recently been added as of, it was finalized two, three months ago. But that is the Duda expansion on the north end of Lake City. It extends up past 10 on in the areas. And I think there's already been, well, I know there's already been one subdivision that was able to rezone or is going to be able to rezone because it's in the Duda now and not strictly pegged to agriculture zone. Now, with that being said, without the utility being up there extending all that to where it's going to be, the density is not there for a lot of people. A lot of major home builders in the United States are looking at Columbia County for subdivisions, but they require density. There, this one particular case I'm talking about would be rural residential subdivision, density of one acre per. Half acre per if it's residential and even more dense if it's a subdivision of PRD and such. So this is opening up the opportunity from a zoning standpoint to put it there or it needs an extension of of this density that homeowners, home builders are willing to develop to bring out and bring even more homes to Columbia County.
Appreciate the presentation. This is a, from, from the presentation that Jeff presented, this is why I say a historic meeting between the two counties. On two of the Columbia County areas, you see that we'll, the city would have the Bell Road Corridor and 47. And, and not beating anybody over the head, but why are Columbia, why are Columbia County in these utility business? I've been on this board a long time, guys. And I, from, from 1976, somewhere between 76 and, and 2080, Tom Foo came to Columbia County and wanted to locate in Columbia County. The first major in project that Columbia County had, it wanted to locate at the airport. How was the B in this county would not have it? Simply because it would increase the wages of the county. That meant that if Travis has got a job making $5 an hour and I'm not paying my $3 an hour, they'll go anyway Travis can all. And for a long time in Columbia County, the powers that be did not want industry to locate in Columbia County. Simply because of greed and wanting to keep wages low. Did not want the county to grow in a sense of speaking. I saw in my lifetime and started at Columbia County, business, 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 business legal county would not locate here. Simply because we didn't have the ability as the utility provider for this county could not provide the utilities for a business location. It would be, okay, they come, they look at the county, we find a site and say, oh, we got to wait till we can go to Tallahassee or go to Washington or go to somewhere to get the funds to put in infrastructure. You know what they done? They got up and went somewhere else. We have a, a new administration within the city of Lake City now, management. They have shown an interest to work with the county. The Bell Road Corridor, the county budgeted about $100,000 to, for the city to find, do a study to find where their ball next were in their sewer line. I don't know whether that have been accomplished yet. I know they have an invoice for the, for the money, so I, I don't know whether that have been accomplished at all. The 47, 75 interchange, that will be strictly provided, utility will be provided for the, by the city. We did not, and I don't know why you guys are in the utility business, but we did not want to go in the utility business. DEP said they have auctionists in the water in Ellisville. Guys, you all got to do something. We asked the utility provider to, would they be interested in extending water to Ellisville? And they said no. We asked for a master meter at what we call the Oasis Ball on 41 there. We couldn't get that worked out. So we as a county had to go into the utility business. That was our first step into utility business because we couldn't get any help. From there, what broke the camel's back was the mega site. The last business that came to the mega, the first business that wanted to locate in the mega site was a $250 million capital investment. The first phase was 100 people, employees. The second phase was 150 employees. We got carried all the way to the, like a wedding, all the way to the, to the wedding and the bride walked out on us. They located in Clay County. Could not provide the water necessary to run this business. The same water that flows on the Swanee County and flows on the Columbia County is the same water that that continent is drawing now because underground aquifer flows to the east. So they are still using our water, but we are getting no benefit from it. The county said enough is enough. We going to look after Columbia County ourselves. And that's what led us going to go into the utility business. We didn't want to, we were forced to. And I tell you guys this, this utility authority that Swanee County and Columbia County have created is the best thing that ever could happen to these two counties. We are not big enough yet, Columbia, Swanee County is not big enough yet to have everything it takes to run a utility. But together, we can do it. We can do it. Now, I'm, I'm, I'm perfectly glad to see this city of penetration now wants to work and do all they can to grow the utilities within the city of Lake City. I have an area that every time it rain, nobody can use the septic tanks. For 15 years, I've been asking the city to run sewer to that area. Never get it done, but this new administration has put it on their list to do a study to see if they can run it. So I'm glad to see that change coming with the relationship, but we are too far gone to start over again. Columbia County going to grow, Swanee County is going to grow. And we got to make sure that the main thing, you can say it all day long, utilities, 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 utilities. If you don't have utilities, Swanee County dies and Columbia County dies. We cannot provide the utilities for companies to come in and locate to give our, our residents, our citizens the opportunity to stay in that county and make a decent wage to take care of their families. Now, I don't know why you guys went in the utility business, but this is the reason we, we went in the utility business. Make sure that when a company came knocking, and let's face it, we've had some great partners. We have DOT that's helping us, we have the private sector helping it, and we have, used to be Plum Creek, we're helping out. So we are set for Columbia County future. It's just that this board of county commissioners had the foresight to saying that we going to make sure that we have a future when it comes to provide jobs for Columbia County and locating. So why do you know what you do?
Kind of along the same, same lines you are on, utilities is the keys to the kingdom. I mean, if you want somebody to come, you pretty much got to have that. And that's what we've aspired to do as well. I don't think nobody really wants to be in the utility business, you just have to be. And that's where we are. Combined at both counties, like you said, we're both small, small operators, don't have a lot of customers. It's not a money-making operation by no means. It's, in my mind, an investment in Swanee County and in Columbia County to lower the cost of running those utilities that are current. deliver the cost of running those utilities that current, and hopefully in the future as well. Also, uh, make it like a non-political organization, so it's, it's run as a business more than it is a political thing. You know, it's run on its own, at some point it pays its own bills, and, and I think that's where we all want to be. And, uh, so to my mind, yeah, it's a losing proposition at this point, but at some point it will pay its way, and, uh, that's what we need. And we need that that commercial base taxpayer to pay, we, we just need that. I mean, that's, that's what's gonna keep the taxes at bay for the residential people is if you've got commercials built, so. That's, that in my mind, what Swan County's after, that's what I've been after. And not only that, it brings both counties together, we're neighbors, and we get to collaborate a lot now that where we didn't in the past, so that's a good thing as well. That's pretty much.
It, it, it's, it's amazing, and I'm, I'm gonna get your permission, I have one more point. That, that, why I'm glad to see the change between the new administration and past administration with the city. You guys know we get a five-year work plan from D O T. We got this five-year work plan from D O T saying, in five years, we gonna do forty seven. Dale and I went to the city. They live in lies, they wrong, you lying. Went to the city and say, they have a five-year work plan out. D O T, forty seven. In five years, they'll talk, they'll beat it out. We went to the then city manager and say, guys, it's a five-year work plan. D O T gonna do this, this, and this. He'll be a good time to do the engineering and, and put all the pipes and stuff on the forty seven while it cool up. But we don't have the money. Dale Williams said, I'll get my board to loan you the money because it's very important to have this done. We was told, no, we don't want your help, and I'm lying Dale. That's true. But I'm just, and I, I have to emphasize, until this new administration show, show me that they are not lying about what they doing, and so far they are working and doing it, then maybe between our authority and the city with forty seven and the railroad corridor, it really grow the area. Tim Murphy?
I agree. The, uh, and it's a collaborative effort, you know, Ron, we talked about it, it's, uh, all the commissioners and, uh, Franklin hit the nail on the head. Uh, it's definitely a losing proposition, but it's, it's an investment to the future. And, uh, I don't think there's many of us sitting in this room that's gonna be the benefit from it, but, you know, that's our job, planning for the future. And, uh, hopefully have good birth in the community. The, uh, I, I think it's a win-win situation. Uh, Ron's hit on it several times, uh, uh, some great things are happening within our city, and, uh, we're gonna capitalize on that work together and do what we can, you know, and it's, uh, and I know the city, I talked to Larry, uh, city administrator over there, but y'all face the same thing we are, you know. But unfortunately, we're all sitting here in a time to where, uh, they used to, it costs, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars, we're on a city that's lying down forty seven, and that's about eight point nine million now. And so it's, uh, that's, that's Franklin and them, just making too much money in the business they're in, I guess. But anyhow, uh, but real quick, Ron, if I may, I got just a couple of questions, uh, on the truly, uh, project y'all got going in Swan County, how many employees that y'all are?
Jimmy, do you know? Estimated three hundred initially, and then once they get fully operational, which is five hundred.
Okay, okay. And, uh, out there at the, I call it the B and B area, is that annexed into the city out there? City got that annex all the way through, where y'all gonna do that expansion?
It's not, it's not annexed to the city.
It is not, it, it, it depends, the, the line is not a straight line out there. So if you think about Lowe's on the north side of seventy second trace, where little Dollar Tree is and some of that, that is in the city, but then just north of that, the beef or property back towards Walmart is still in the county. And then as you cross over to the west side of one twenty nine, Publix is in the city. D L F up on the hill in Palms is in the city, but that's where it stops, so the property, uh, just north of that, again, is, is county property.
So there's no bad comments, Jimmy and the city.
Now, now, some of this may be changing as we develop sixty eight. Uh, and we, you know, working on quite a few projects north. I know the city has, um, an inclination to maybe expand their limits out that way.
And Greg, you mentioned something about where the county and the, uh, Swan County, Columbia County are gonna, no, it wasn't, I'm sorry, it was just sharing there. Uh, where, where exactly is that at? Is it on the, Greg, is that on the, uh, White Springs side of the interstate or where we talking about?
It's between one thirty fifth and seventy five interchange. Swan County has that interchange in Swan County. Just to the east of that, you're in Columbia County, we cross river in the White Springs and the Hamilton County.
Right.
So, uh, we got three RV parks up there, I believe. And plus some residential that's on the north side of the road there, uh, of Swan County. And you can put all that into the wastewater.
In such a location that our county can't service, city like city can't service. If they're ever going to have service, it really does have to be Swan County.
Okay.
That'll be good. Robert, chairman.
Oh, go ahead, Ron.
What you say, Ron, yeah.
But I don't know who will bet you the second. That, and, and, and I'm glad to see that, where they called about Columbia County and serving that area. Because that was the whole, the whole plan for this utility to be where it's at today. Is, you know, at some point, we might concern parts of Swan County, we have utilities, but, but we got the whole west side of Columbia County right now with no utilities at all. There we will. You know, it's a, you know, and, and, and the whole goal of this utility is to be one utility at, at, at some point. So, so we're not really, we're not really drawing lines for Columbia County or Swan County. We're putting, we're, we're putting utilities where they're needed. And if Columbia County can serve that area, that's great. If Swan County can serve that area, that's great. Because at the end of the day, like I said, it's all gonna be one utility, served by one board. So, you know, really, that's, that's the whole plan, it's working. And, uh, and I think we need to, uh, I think we need to proceed the same way we're, the way we're going.
What I want to say is I really want to thank these Swan County guys, because I know when we went into this, I know all the commissioners, we were scared, you know, like, this is a bunch of money, this is a big deal. And, and for a county the size of Swan County to jump in this with us, I want to tell y'all, we really appreciate that. And, uh, it, it means a lot, because we had other counties that thought they wanted Simon Aback, and y'all stayed in that. And really, we're the two biggest, and we're the two best to, to work together because of our line. But I, I tell you, things like this, when you're a commissioner, don't get you elected. They don't help you. You're not gonna get one vote off this. But thirty-five, forty years from now, all the commissioners are gonna get votes off. They're gonna be able to keep taxes down, they're gonna be able, we'll all be dead probably, maybe not Travis, he's pretty in there. I want to say something else, I don't know where y'all got those shirts at, that's fancy. I want to commend everybody, because it, it is a scary thing, you know, because we're all conservative guys, we don't like spending taxpayers' dollars, but we have to do this to make it a better place, you know, for our counties to grow, so. So, um, I, I, I think it's a great thing, but like you said, none of us will really, I don't think really many people sitting here will see the fruits of this, the, the major fruits of this, so I, I want to commend everybody on doing it. It's still scary, just as scary as the one that they restarted, but, but it's, it's what you have to do and what every other major county has ever done, so.
Yeah, thank you, Sherman. No, I would, I would agree with all you guys on, I mean, is it scary? Yes. Does it benefit us today? No, it's, it's an investment, but as any successful business man ever was, it, you got to start somewhere. And, um, you know, these projects are expensive these days, they cost a lot of money. And, you know, for us to continue to try to fight those battles individually with Columbia and Swan fighting it, and then, and, and it, and, and even competing against each other. Um, it just doesn't make sense. Um, you know, if you pull your resources together and, and, and the jobs that, that go along with these utilities and manage them are, are expensive salaries, so doesn't really make sense for Swan County to have a hundred thousand dollar employee managing four sites, or, or, or two sites. You know, it makes sense for this board to come together and pull their resources and, and collaborate and share that employee, and that, that board, um, run those utilities. I'm like, you know, like Mr. Holger said, you know, I don't, I don't think that, um, five years from now, we'll be jumping up and down, but thirty-five years from now, there'll be a board that says, man, I'm glad that those guys got together and built these utilities along this I ten corridor and this I seventy five, and, 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 uh, hopefully they'll say that those are some smart guys, that actually, it's stuck it out.
And Travis, I'm gonna go, you know, really and truly, you can extend this right on to jails, I mean, you can send, there's, there's no end to what you can do together to cut the cost for both counties, or, and like Robbie said, Swan County don't want in right now, but we're not really cutting any another county out. They could join at some point if they want to.
And I think they will.
And I, I do, I, I agree.
Once we get big enough and they start seeing the possibilities, they will.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm about covering everything. It's been a pleasure sitting on the board, like, I appreciate the opportunity. I think it's working good together.
Chair, real quick, Greg can elaborate to this and, uh, any engineer in the field, but, uh, Ron, they're going to the campground, it seems like, oh, we're just gonna get some business, but that's a big deal, because that's a credit. If, Greg meant from Ron Dale. This, the environmental, you know, impacted area such as this, Swan River is right here, me and Ron, and we all know that road flooded to the top of the years. But that, that's a big deal, we'll take that many tanks off of the system and, and, you know, generate their plant there. It's, uh, that's a good move, that's a really, really good move. I think, uh, we can help Swan County there, and then we collectively start lobbying, like we just had a meeting this morning in Tallahassee. That, that's further than our cap, is what I'm looking at. I think it's a good investment.
You know, the rules of that, I'll say, I think I would agree, we, uh, don't like campgrounds. Moving forward, any campgrounds that come to Swan County have to be a department. Just, you, you guys all hit on it. You know, I worked with Jimmy a lot, trying to bring business to Swan County and into our area, and that's, I would say that's one of the top three, maybe five questions right, right out of the gate.
Water and sewage.
Yeah. Water and sewage, we hear it all the time. I mean, you, you know, school, hospital, things of that nature, but you can't ignore it, and I'm thankful we got this board that, uh, two counties that put together a board to do this, because, again, you said it, Mr. Williams, we didn't want to be in this business, but it is part of doing that together, and that's what we're doing, and I appreciate all of you. Appreciate the discussions today, it's an eye-opener. We got Franklin on there, so, you know, representing us, which is great, you got a lot of knowledge, and, uh, we threw up talking to, obviously you guys as well, so thank you.
Commissioner, you have done.
Well, I'm just telling you, also, I think this is a good thing because of, uh, you know, as we, as Mr. Murphy was saying, about taking these septic tanks off of the systems. You know, a lot of, uh, businesses that's, we want to come in, have, have individual septic systems. And then I know with all the changes in Tallahassee, talking about septic system and inspection and all that stuff too, you know, maybe that they have, we don't, they're taking uh, work being system, not have so much as, hey, you're talking about going to the water system. So it's a bit regular to control that, and also to have, uh, the joint effort between these, these counties working together to, uh, combat the cost of the running operation, and a lot of, uh, things that ties into septic system, uh, running this treatment plan, I might be around with it. Stuff on that, okay, no kids, and take a lot to, on these, these type of systems. And by having a joint effort between the counties, I think that's great.
And Phil? I would say what, what he, what he said, a lot of people don't realize, that you cannot get a septic tank permit for an industrial business. It's got to be on, on, on industrial water sewer. So if you want industry, you have to have water sewer here. Septic tank, wait for them, and one issue permanent. But Phil, you have, right?
I just would like to thank Swan County Board too for being here today, and everybody discussing. I mean, it doesn't matter whether we should discuss in water or whatever, but one thing I want you to remember, what you just heard, Ron Williams, sit right here, say, we got to have water, you got to have water to live, it don't matter where you at, what you do. But he's been on this board for almost forty-four years now, and if y'all will listen to that man over there, I mean, know him all my life, and he knows just about every pebble that's been turned over in this county, and he's right, didn't have what we needed here to get what we needed, and now I think amongst all of us, we can make it work.
One more thing, I'd just like to ask the Swan County Commissioners and the public commissioners to put their trust in this utility authority and let this utility authority be the decision-maker for utilities for Swan and Columbia County in the future. Now, you know, naturally, they can have input, they, they can attend to meetings anytime they want to, but I think the decisions on utilities should be made by the utility authority from this point on. Are y'all, is everybody agreeing with that?
And, 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 and why, why value the vote? This utility authority was put together by a vote of each board that had the, the, the ability to say, we gonna create this authority, we gonna appoint the members to the authority, and the authority run the utility. I keep hearing about all the negotiations and deals being cut with utilities, and we don't know nothing about it. And I agree, and I hope Columbia, uh, Swan County agree, any negotiations about utilities should be done by this utility authority. Just that simple. We are in charge of running utilities for these two counties, this authority board that these commissions have appointed to this authority should be the one to do, negotiate any utility project they have, and every, and both can have equal representation. And then that goes back to the board of county commissioners of each county, they say, here is a recommendation from the utility authority to do so. There's something else that I, 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 I want to ask the boards to do. The authority was created by a vote of the board of county commissioners. And each authority probably had five commissioners say, yeah, we in. Let me give you a good, it's a good little story, why I want this to happen. And I asked for this meeting to be done before November the fifth. I don't know whether I'm gonna be re-elected or not, there ain't but two things certain, that's death and taxes. Everything else, you don't know. Back in the early eighties, Dick Powell came to the board of county commissioners one day, and we got to talking about the financial stability of Columbia County. He had a easel, he's always lying. He drew this line on this stuff. He said, let me tell you what this two lines stand for. If you follow this line and do what I recommend, Columbia County will be a financially strong county. If you do not, you will not be. Right now, Columbia County is among the strongest financial sound counties in the state of Palms. Back, I guess, fifteen, twenty years ago, fifteen years ago, could be, we got two new commissioners elected. And the commissioner that wasn't elected, our board was a three-two board. Me and Dewey, we were the two. There was another three, another five, so almost every controversial vote went three-two, and me and Dewey on. It don't happen in Swan County, do it. These three commissioners looked at the contingencies that Columbia County had built over the years. And they had this idea that we gonna reduce the military. We're not gonna raise taxes and we gonna run the county out of the reserves. That wasn't a good thing to do. Through some politicking through, uh, from leaders in the community, we got one of the three on our side. So we did not fund the county out of reserves. We voted in the next meeting that anything that comes out of reserve over ten thousand dollars that was gonna be reoccurring revenue, it took a super majority to do so. I don't know how many of us gonna be commissioners or how long we gonna be commissioners. But I'm, I'm gonna act Columbia County to make it a super majority to disband this authority. I don't want three cahoots together and say, I want out of this. I don't, I, I do not believe that you get full county commissioners out of either district to say disband this authority. And I want our board at our next meeting on the agenda to act for a super majority to disband this authority.
Who would do that? Brady?
I already talked to Brady.
I was ready about that.
Yes, sir. Brady?
Yeah. And, and what I would say, I do believe we need to prefer the two county attorneys. The way it's drafted, um, nobody's in jail. Okay. Nobody's in prison. Where to go? Okay. Um, by joint resolution, two county commissioners can say, we're not gonna do this anymore. Okay. On a hundred and eighty days notice, one of the county commissioners can say, our team's not going to do this anymore. So I would think that, um, I hear your request, uh, Mr. Chairman. And I believe that Adam and Joel are gonna need to advise each of the board of county commissioners for their campaigns as to whether or not you can do that under your charter, under your governing laws. Uh, and, and, um, we can certainly make whatever amendment the two bodies to write this to do as an amendment to the interloper agreement.
But, uh, but at that point, if, if it's already formed and it's in, it's, and it's an operation, if one county's had, they wanted out. If all the utilities are combined at that point, somebody's got. Joel, I see you shaking your head.
You want to be at a, a counting challenge to, to help them.
There, there's two paths running here. Commissioner's right. If you guys want to adopt a rule for yourself, hey, this particular issue has to be super majority vote. Do that all day long. I'll do you an ordinance. We'll take care of that. The flip side is what Brady's kind of willing to, which is everybody's holding their own assets right now. Columbia County holds title of what it holds. Swanee County holds title of what it holds. When this thing's properly organized, you're gonna hand all that over to this new entity. So now what's the cost of leaving? It just got way high. So the other thing, and Brady's talked to y'all about this before, because you've created this special district and because you're gonna invest it with so much assets and so much going for it, it's gonna be able to go out and borrow money instead of you guys having to borrow the money. So your books are gonna be clean. But you need, I mean, I've heard a number as much as thirty million dollars for the wastewater treatment plant that we're gonna do to Ellisville.
Also, when, when, when the billion dollars, right?
Wouldn't you route that outfit that you've created, that y'all agreed to create? Let them go borrow that thirty million dollars. Y'all protect your bonding capacity as counties. So what's gonna happen, Commissioner? Just like you said, you had this great financial strategy that Dick Powell put together and the consequences of violating that would have been so great for the county. And you knew that and that's why the vote went the way it did. It'll be ten times that if you say you wanted to span the utility. Because guess what? All those debts and obligations are now gonna have to be split up with the assets and your books are gonna get destroyed. Because y'all wouldn't go out and bond, but this outfit's gonna bond. You just wouldn't, as a board of county commissioners, wouldn't do that. There's a business case for everything this utility authority is gonna do. It's not always gonna be politically popular. That's why we separated it. That's why we all worked together on this. And Adam, if I said anything, it's different. And your, your view of it?
No, I just reiterate, I think the way that it would have to procedurally be, get to the floor would have to.
Yeah, but we'll do an ordinance for that, Commissioner, and I'll draft that up. I don't think we can adopt it at the next meeting, but we'll get the ball.
Okay. All, all, I need to tell them, Brad, where's Brad? Brad, we, we, we know how hard it is to increase our cup when it comes to water, no matter where you are. And I know you're working and you're looking. But we really need the emphasis put on recharge. If we do recharge, it's one of the water management to increase our cup. So we really need to do the work on, on some good recharge program. So there'll be a, about sort of real water management. So there'll be no stumbling when we need that additional water.
Yeah, we, we've had some discussions on strategies for that. Um, just kind of maybe so the rest of the group kind of knows. When you're, when you're seeking capacity, uh, all our water pulling out of the ground, uh, that has impacts to Swanee River, the Tuckney River, Santa Fe River. Uh, along with those rivers are all the springs, Little River, Troy, uh, to name a couple of them. So all of those, all those water bodies are important to us economically. From another area as well. So we, you know, we, we want to be good stories. We don't want to impact those. But we want to grow too. And as someone pointed out, we need water. We've talked about, we need water. That you got to have water to, to grow as well. Um, so those will be, uh, very important to develop that with the, along with, uh, the water management district. We've been having some discussion with staff, uh, already about some opportunities. Uh, I've talked to some, the, some of the commissioners here in Columbia about some opportunities we have here in, in Columbia. Uh, Swanee, you kind of got in on it ahead of time. You haven't seen it, but, but, that, that cup we got for, uh, NFMP, it took forever to get that, it seemed like. And luckily we had some, uh, we were able to convince the district that because the county put in some drainage wells and different things that we had to model it, were able to run the model and, and, and show that we had no impact to it. But, uh, recharge, uh, now recharge is not the same as, as reuse. A lot of people talk about, you know, purple pipe and, uh, sprayed it out on the ground. That's not exactly the same as, as recharge. Recharge is we're putting water back into the ground, uh, directly. Uh, so that we maintain our aquifer levels and don't have the drawdowns and don't have to reduce flows in the spring and impact those as well. So, but Commissioner, yes, sir, we're definitely working on that.
That's great. Dale, you have anything you need to add, being our, your career director?
Wonderful job.
Where are we, uh, where are we on the, the, uh, application, advertisement for the director?
Can you? Uh, I don't remember the date. It's, I believe it's the day before the.
Yeah, come up with a, hold it there, so.
Chairman, I believe the applications are due the day before the, about getting holiday. I think that'd be the date. And your, uh, utility rate study is about a week prior to that.
That's what RFP is, right?
RFQ.
RFQ.
Any question from Dale, permitted commissioners? Right, thanks Dale.
Thank you, sir.
Brady? Anything you need to add?
So everybody remembers, uh, nine eleven. I just wanna say one word about the shirts. The shirts have power. And I would love to see us have North Quarter Water Utilities, thirty shirts also. I walked into the county administration building. This is after everything went to lockdown. Y'all remember? Okay. I'm in Clay County now. And, uh, you know, the checkpoint charter, you know, you can't do this, you can't do that. Well, at that point in time, I'd spent money in my own pocket and bought myself a Clay County Utility Authority shirt, so I didn't have to wear a suit and all the needs. Okay? I came in and all of a sudden there's a, is that right? I looked at some fishy weight, um, authority. And I said, yes, sir. They said, we'll go right along. So the shirt had a power. So I would say, yep, let's get some North Quarter Water Utility Authority shirts also. That's all I got.
Take care of that, Tom.
Will you ever be a comment?
Yes, sir. I appreciate, uh, the board coming together and, and it's always encouraging to see such significant units of government seeing eye to eye on, on big vision. Cause that's really what you guys have said. Most of us won't live to see what this really turns into. This is pure vision. And so I, I want to thank all of you for, for having vision.
City manager, Swanee County, I mean county manager, Swanee County.
I've been working county government for thirty-six years and, um, I can speak for Swanee County's board. We have a board that, that has unity, same vision, same focus, working together. Don't always agree, that's okay. But as a unit, we work for the same goal. And Joel mentioned it, vision. The thing I've said for years is if you have a vision, the money's in these parts. But you have a vision first. And I think the, the steps y'all taken, um, and I, and when talking about what Columbia or Swanee County's got, I see that in Columbia County also. You got unity. People want to go for the same, same good. But I'm really proud of what y'all have done to move forward. The vision that you're creating now will last for legacy, for other folks. And I'm just proud of what y'all have accomplished and the teamwork together to make it, make it successful. But, um, I can really commend, commend both boards for your action and what you're, what you're doing.
David?
Kind of just echo Greg's thoughts. Um, the fact that now both boards have seen what both counties are up, you now have a shared vision. So it's not just what we're doing. It's gotta be one vision for everybody, for the authority to work. So now to share that vision, before we didn't have that vision on our side. We had what we were doing, but we didn't know what you were doing. Probably the same on your side. So I think this was a good meeting. Get everybody to see the big picture over the whole region. Chairman, if I may.
I'm good. One thing that I would think, just prospectively, we're gonna need to keep an eye on, as Joel pointed out, you know, once the utility authority has title to everything, that's when we're all married, right? For all practical purposes. That's also gonna be the big leap of faith. It's one thing to have these meetings and the kumbaya sessions and say, everything's gonna be great. It's gonna be something else entirely. And both of these boards take the vote to title everything into the utility authority. So I think there's gonna need to be some very clear benchmarks of when we get to X, it's time to take the jump. Because if we don't have very clear guidelines, you know, it's, nobody's gonna be willing to walk the plank. So just as we're, as you guys as a utility authority are gearing up, we need to be able to be able to point to something objective, which says, all right, it's time to actually take the jump. Cause this is not the jump. It's when everything gets titled, that's the jump. So just something to keep in mind.
And, and to, and to, to back that up, that's a high level coordination that's gonna be required of all three agencies, right? Both counties and the utility authority. We gotta be willing to give it. Swanee County's gotta be willing to give theirs. And they gotta be ready to take it. So getting the director in the stable, under contract, ready to go, big step number one. Then you got some housekeeping to get yourself administratively prepared. And then, you know, it's time to, to, to go back to Commissioner Williams. It's time to go to the altar again. And to hope that the bride shows up. But that, that's when everything's gonna occur. Brady, Adam and I will be heavily involved, making sure the paperwork's right. But I mean, that'll be, you know, it'd be a big damn deal when you got to sign that paperwork after that board meeting. But you will have to vote for it as a board. Yes, we like the transfer of our assets. Swanee County, my suggestion would be let's, let's have it all happen. We do another joint meeting.
Well, yes, let's call this a deal, not a marriage, cause.
What in the world?
He's saying. You think a marriage is a hell of a lot more painful than anything a deal? Jerk is. Stop gigs and only get into.
I'm very confident between the attorney and, and attorney Joel and, and I've, uh, authority attorney, Mr. Williams, that y'all will keep up on the right track and make sure that we achieve and don't have a. Any final comments?
Obviously thankful, we, we thank y'all for hosting. Thank y'all for having us, um, putting it together. And I mean, there's some press in the room here, but, you know, a lot of your advertisers don't understand what utilities are and what they do. And, and when you talk about utilities, you build it, they become, we, we hear it all the time. Man, I would love for my kids to have an opportunity to stay home and have a good job. This is job creation, as far as, um, this is how you keep your kids home and, and have those businesses come in that can pay a good wage, as you talked about. And, and for them to have the opportunity to live in Swanee or Columbia County, not have to leave to get a, you know, to get a fifty thousand dollar job. Um, so it'll benefit children to come, families to come. It allows this board will, you know, you leverage your revenues, which, which will increase your, your, your borrowing power, which keeps your book, your roots cleaner, um, and, and us not try to carry all these two loads individually. You let, let the, the authority do that. Um, and obviously this will be another mechanism, in my opinion, on protecting your agricultural communities. Because you're going, you're going to focus, that growth's gonna be focused around the utilities. And these utilities are gonna be the one opposed to, uh, higher density populations where industrial and commercial sites are already at. So it, it, you know, it's a, it, there's multiple benefits in, in us working together and doing this and protecting our rural life, providing an opportunity for our children for years to come. And, and, you know, and, and reducing that, that debt, that debt on the residential population. Not generating. A lot of people don't realize. Real tax base. And what that does for your school boards, you know, they, they get a piece of that pie too. So, um, I'm all for it. And, uh, I just want to thank Columbia County for hosting and, and y'all having the vision and the foresight. Um, you know, to put your best foot forward and, and you speak from experience. So I'm not a better person than, than to hear what you've seen the lack thereof and what it can do to you.
Yeah.
I just got one question while we all here. Is anybody against us? Before we get so far down the road, at some point you're not gonna back up from this. So if anybody's got anything to say, now's the time to say it. If you, you don't agree with whatever's going on or if you have any doubt.
Chairman, and I would like to say one other thing. The number one problem I see with utilities that's run by individual cities or municipality, whether, you know, it's not a authority. Kids, they want to rob the profits, what they call the profits, out of that utility and put it in general fund. And then the utility suffers from it. They can't expand. They can't do the proper maintenance on the utility. And that's the great thing about the utility authority. All the money and finances stays back in that utility for expansion and for maintenance. So, you know, I, I think this is the way to do a utility.
And what we've heard from the start and we knew the ones that, that been in it moment ago. Every presentation we heard from our attorney, from Brad Bailey, that utility does not make money. So you take it and you invest it back into your utility system. And once you do that, you don't get behind on it. All right, uh, yes, sir.
Should, should we have another meeting occasionally like we're having?
Well, I was gonna address that, uh, at the end. This, uh, let me, let me get back around to where I'm going. Uh, any, any public comment? Any public comment? All right, now here it is. David, you and the county manager from Swanee County, y'all get together in three months to do another three month meeting that will be held in Swanee County.
So basically you're wanting to meet four times a year?
Yes.
The whole of the both boards?
Yes.
Just kind of keep everybody informed about the date on what's going on.
Yes.
I like that idea.
This is Chairman, and I'm not disagreeing. I just, so then we run the risk of undermining the utility authority board. All right. I just want to bring that to everybody's attention. That once this is up and running, it's independent.
Right. Oh, it'll be independent, but we just wanna meet.
Well, that implies oversight of that board. And I, 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 I'm not trying to dis, I mean, y'all are members of that board. I just, as we're. I just, as we're getting started certainly, but I just want to caution everybody, there's, it could get, have some negative consequences.
Commissioner Williams, you're, you're talking about a workshop like this, just an update on everybody's.
Yeah, yeah, we, we are not, we are not meeting to tell the utility board what to do as commissioners. We're just in a workshop to keep everybody, to keep the, the chemistry.
Yeah, it's information.
Yeah, information. All right, any of I have anything else? All right, well, we adjourn. Good evening.